Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Cedar Falls Board of Education. With that this evening, I'd like to have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved by Susan, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jenny, any questions or concerns regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. At this time, we have no public comment. So Julie, would you like to come up? And this is Julie's last meeting as she heads off to college and remind us again where you're going.
I will be going to the University of Kansas to study communications and business this fall.
Wonderful, it's been a delight to have you here and we greatly appreciate it and you will be missed.
Yes, I will miss this, thank you guys so much for listening to me talk. A couple times a month, you know, it's pretty fun.
And she already warned us she's gonna scoot out of here because of finals, so I think we'll let her do that.
Yeah, well, I would stay, but yeah, I have finals and that's kinda going with what I'm saying today. Yeah, so seniors' last day is this Thursday, so we have all of our finals early this week and so I have my sociology final tomorrow, so I have faith I will do good, but I'm wishing everyone the best of luck on whatever finals they might have this upcoming week. With that, I will lead into what's going on at Cedar Falls High School, yay. I guess not really much, we're kinda ending here. Okay, that's false, but you know.
The lead-in was great.
I don't know. So yeah, so seniors' last day will be this Thursday and so we have, that means commencement is this Sunday up at the McLeod Center. You know, if you'd like to watch the 2017 graduates graduate, it's a great opportunity for you to see our awesome class walk across. I would like to congratulate the track teams and their state championships and all of their running and accomplishments. They worked very hard this season to get where they were and I'm very proud of each and every one of them. And with that, right now up at the high school, there's a band concert going on, so good luck to all of them and play beautifully. I know they will. What else is going on? I'm trying to think.
Have you seen us since you had prom? How did prom go?
Oh, prom went well, yeah. Prom was last two, no.
Week or two?
It was Mother's Day weekend.
It was the thirteenth, yeah, prom was the thirteenth. I'm mixing up all my weeks, I feel really bad. Yeah, prom was the thirteenth, it went well, junior leadership did an excellent job setting that up and putting that together. Great way to end my high school career. There was one more thing that was going on, but my goodness, I'm blanking on it.
Can I add one thing if that's okay?
Yes, yes.
One of the things that we're doing brand-new this year with our senior class is we have senior breakfast and then we go to rehearsal for the graduation ceremony. Then we're gonna do a grad walk where the graduates are going to go out to their elementaries with their graduation gear and walk through the elementaries just to make sure that people understand and students understand what they're aspiring to. It's gonna be a neat event.
Yeah, so senior leadership, we were, you know, talking about ways to, you know, contribute to like the younger kids in the community and we thought, you know, like we do a lot with like, I don't wanna say charity work, but like community work, but we thought even doing something simple like that and just kinda showing them like, this is, this is gonna be you in the future. I think we just thought that'd be really inspiring and like hopefully like encourages the younger kids to take leadership positions as they move forward in like middle school or late elementary, middle school and high school and just throughout their whole lives, so we thought that'd be a good idea. And so, I guess that's pretty much it, we're just wrapping things up at the high school. And senate elections will be next Wednesday, so I'm excited to pass the baton down to our next president, vice presi- I guess I wouldn't do it for the vice president, but essentially the next officers, so.
Good, well, we'll be glad to have them, so thank you. And just a quick question, not to put you on the spot, but what's your class motto?
Oh, man.
An easier one, what's your class flower? Do you have a flower?
Oh.
Or do they not-
It begins with an M.
It's like magnolias.
There you go. Oh, you know, okay.
Yes.
And it's a Dr. Seuss quote.
Yes, it's, um, oh my goodness, I'm spacing on it, I'm so sorry.
That's alright, that's alright.
No, yeah.
How about your colors?
It is, um, oh no.
You don't have to give all the terminology on it. What colors are they usually?
I couldn't tell you the state birds, the class bird might be.
What's your graduation year?
Oh no, the 2017.
I'm sorry, we've never asked the other two that, so I feel bad that I put you on the spot about that.
No, it's okay.
For Julie to end on a positive note, she was the, was it the MC or the whatever at the honors convocation?
Yeah.
The other day, and she did an outstanding job.
Thank you very much.
It's sort of up to, is it called MC? She was the one that introduced all the scholarships and all the speakers and you did an outstanding job of keeping it moving and congratulating each person individually, I just was very impressed, so.
Thank you so much.
That's a difficult job and she did her some interesting job.
And you did a very good job with that.
Thank you so much.
Put that on your resume.
Congratulations, we know this is such a hectic time of year for seniors finishing the school year and wrapping up the finals and prepping for graduation, so congratulations.
Thank you so much, it means a lot.
Yep.
Yeah, well, thank you guys so much, this has been wonderful.
Just make sure you pack your right colors when you head south, 'cause you know for certain games, you need to be sporting the right colors, Julie.
Your cyclones.
Alright.
Always, once a cyclone fan, always a cyclone fan.
There you go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Julie.
Bye-bye.
And good luck tomorrow.
Alright, moving on to item E on the agenda. Approve plans, specifications and set a public hearing for the Orchard Hill Elementary Project.
And I'd like to introduce Dan Chandler from construction architects and Michael Broke from modus engineering and they will review the plans and specifications for that project. And they're very excited, I see.
Obviously.
Boy, he's pumped up.
What's our motto?
What's your bird?
Creating spaces that change lives. Got it.
Oh, he practiced.
And location, 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 right?
Very good. Okay, so good to be here again tonight. Run through things quickly for you for Orchard Hill and North Cedar. So what you see in front of you is the perspective of Orchard Hill, front entry. And what we've done is kind of built off of the orchard theme, shall we say, a little bit. So the front there, you can see the front canopy starts to take on a look of some apple trees, which going back in history and looking some at some very old aerials, there was actually an orchard there at one time, so. Okay, so next, let's see, there we go. Okay, we'll run through the plan here real quick. Basically, everything to the, let's see. From the red area on the right-hand side going north, or excuse me, in this case, west. West is up in this case, north is to the right. Everything along that line is new to the right. So the yellow is the cafeteria auditorium. The red is office area, nurses, break room. Orange is the gymnasium. Far lower right-hand corner is the kitchen area with some mechanical spaces, storage spaces above that in the blue. Then immediately west of the gymnasium is the storm shelter in the purple, which also is, main purpose obviously is the music spaces. We have the restrooms northwest of those, which is, restrooms are a part of the safe room itself, so we allow for access through one of the music rooms into the restroom. And that door is locked at all times, so just during an event, that would be unlocked. The two orange, two lighter blue rooms to the west of the music are the PLC labs for the fifth and sixth grade instructors. The orange is special ed. And then as we move to the west, the lighter green, there are two DaVinci labs there, two studios and then in the middle is the commons space. So that is all existing, or excuse me, new square footage. Then coming back down to the office area, as we move to the south or to the left, we have first grade rooms, which are basically being upgraded, you know, given a facelift. The lower-left, light blue area is an alternative kindergarten, I believe it is. Going left, some special ed spaces, another special ed space west of that. The media center being given a facelift, that's the blue area. The, looking at the entry area, to the right of that is the pre-K, so we're setting that up to allow those students to come into the vestibule and immediately into the pre-K room prior to being able to go on into the building. So that's set up like we've set up other buildings in the district. To the south of the entry, you see what used to be the gymnasium and so we have created a co-lab space there on the northern side, right side. And to the south side is the art room and maker space. We're doing quite a bit of work in those areas. Then moving further to the left, creating new kindergarten rooms, remodeling the restrooms. We're kind of making this a little bit more like what we've done at Southdale. If you remember those projects, going in and moving things around. Then upper-left-hand corner at the south end, we have again another kindergarten and a special ed room. Going to the west from the old gymnasium area, you'll see another orange area that is a special ed reading area. And then going further down, we're taking over one of the classrooms for a co-lab space. So that gives a pretty good understanding of how the building lays out, how we laid it out. Mike, do you have any things you would like to add?
About the mechanical electrical briefly. On the north addition, it's being set up a lot like Aldridge and also Hanson Elementary. If you remember, that circle got removed and we, it reminds me a lot like that. It's a geothermal system like Aldridge, so we did a test well, very favorable on the well production on that. On the existing system, we're expanding the existing hot water boiler system and in the remodeled areas, we're just putting new equipment in. There's some areas that we evaluated on leaving the existing. We felt that it had been renovated in the early 2000s and the systems were still, still operational. Electrically, we have a new electrical service. Lighting is gonna be LED and any remodeling areas in existing are gonna be converted to LED. So we will have some fluorescent lights that are still in place, but wherever remodeling is gonna be updated. Technology is the same thing, similar to Aldridge is the new addition in the remodeling. Where we're updating the classrooms and the new technology is being done at that place, that time. Fire alarm is throughout the building, paging is throughout the building. It's just older systems and it's time that those need to be updated.
So any questions for us at this point?
Two questions. You use the term and maybe this is not the right term, alternative kindergarten. What is alternative kindergarten?
It is kind of a kinder prep, well, we'll let Pam answer.
Pam.
Well, kinder, it's kind of a kinder prep is what it is. We're having many more families ask for kind of a program that is for students that would be eligible for kindergarten as far as age, but maybe not at the level of either academically or socially or emotionally ready for kindergarten. They're not eligible to go into the state-funded preschool program because they're five instead of four. We have no space for them right now. So the thought is that we actually can have them into a kindergarten prep program. It's the same kind of curriculum as kindergarten. We actually get 1.0 state funding for those students. It allows us to be able to serve those that might have some additional needs within that program, but then get them right into kindergarten or depending on how that year goes, into first grade the following year.
Great, that's, I mean, a program I've heard about 30 years ago, so yeah, I mean, it sort of comes all back around.
Would that be something where it is open district-wide for people to apply to as well?
That would be the intent.
And is that the only classroom like that we would have?
It is, correct, we do not have anything like that at this time.
And then the other question is, so that the north section of the building goes into what is currently the parking lot. Is that correct?
The parking lot and the house that has been demolished.
Okay, the lot there.
Yes.
Okay.
And then there's another lot to the north that the district owns that that house will be demolished and that is in the parking, the new parking lot area.
Okay, and how long ago did we buy those properties?
Oh my gosh.
Forever?
Four, four or five years ago.
Great, perfect, that's why I need to know.
Okay, any other questions?
Very in-depth process again, working with staff, working with the design team going through and making sure that the spaces are utilized effectively. Really, you know, thank the design team, Doug and the work that he's done and certainly Pam as well. So it's been very intensive, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
Okay.
Moving on.
Do we want to?
Do we want to, yeah, let's do this. Do I have a motion to set a public hearing?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the plans, specifications and form a contract and set June 12th, 2017 at 5:30 PM as the date and time to hold a public hearing for the 2017 Orchard Hill Elementary Project.
Thank you, Suzie, do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions regarding setting the public hearing?
I think it's important to note that the language within that motion is 5:30. That is the time when we start our new pilot for board meetings, so we'll start 5:30 that evening.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Alright, moving on to item F, approving this plan, specifications and set a public hearing for the North Cedar Elementary Project.
Okay. And we're back, okay. So again, you have, you've seen this in the past, the entry to the North Cedar. So what I was going to do here was kind of run through the plan that you saw last time that was bid upon and then we'll run through quickly the changes that we have made to it. And then talk about a few other things. So again, starting at the north, we have the cafeteria, the kitchen in yellow. Storm shelter is on the left in the purple. So we have a music room, restroom, and we've had some discussions about one of those, the lower music room possibly becoming more of a special ed room. So little, the way things work, it maybe works out a little bit better that way. Orange is the gymnasium, darker orange is, or red, office area. Red across the hall from the office is the counselor, let's see, kindergarten. And in the green areas to the right of that is a couple more special ed rooms, co-lab down in the corner. And then the lighter blue area that you see to the right is art maker space area in there. Okay, working our way down, the darker blue is new mechanical space and then the next green is the pre-K space. Again, having that same entry pathway where you can come into the vestibule and then go immediately into that room before going into the building. Working further to the southeast, you can see where we had planned to relocate the media center to. Then we had four studios around a co-lab space, reworking the maker space in the media center, existing media center and the orange again being a special ed. And then off to the right in the east wing, special ed room and co-lab space. So having done, done all of that and looking at ways that we can reduce costs for the project, we came in and you can basically see the, on the upper plan, it pretty much stayed as is. The line immediately north of the green kindergarten rooms, that is all addition, so the existing building from that point on is demolished. So we really didn't do, change anything there other than in the storm shelter area, we're going to reduce the number of windows. There was a pretty substantial cost for the storm shutters in that area, so we reduced them by a considerable amount. Then as we work our way down, the kindergarten room stayed pretty much as is, the special ed, art space, pre-K. And then once we get south of that, you, we, in lieu of relocating the media center, adding on for that, tearing down a portion of the existing building and building that common space with the classrooms around them, we simply reused the existing rooms, we're gonna give those a facelift. The two rooms on the very-
Where are you talking about just now?
The bottom.
The bottom.
The square green and the light-
At the very bottom, you can see the light blue and there's a green area to the left of that. So that's actually the extent of the addition on that end of the building, which is a reduction of approximately 2,600 square feet. Still getting all of the same spaces in there, the media center stays the same. Then special ed and co-lab space down on the east end. So that's, that's what we've done to reduce the square footage and reduce the cost of the building. So the other thing that we did in talking to the contractors and finding and looking for ways to reduce the timeline and thereby reduce cost. Phase one, they can, the contractor can start fall of 17, they don't have to start right away. Excuse me. Timing-wise, if they wait a little while, then they can go in there and they would do all of the darker areas to the south and kind of in the central core of the building. I might add that we're currently have the drawings out to some contractors to get the portables relocated, so that we can get that taken care of ahead of time. So the dark areas, the contractor can have access to, which gives them enough work to keep people there and working once they start. So they then work through the year, come summer of 18, then the lighter gray area can come into play. So that's, that's a piece that's a lot more manageable for a contractor to be able to complete in the summer timeframe. While at the same time, once June of 18 comes around, then they can demolish the existing building, which allows that to occur while the students are not, not in session, which would be a very good thing. So in discussions with Doug and Pam and rest of the administration, you can kind of see there where we have listed the people that may go into the portables. Instructional coaches, Title I, AEA counselor, tag speech, mental health counselor and counselor. What makes this work partially is that art and music would go onto a cart system. Second grade, as you can see, would go into the existing art room. There are, Pam, if I remember right, it's 30 students, so they would, the teachers would be team teaching in that room and I believe you feel that's a good, good solution. So that allows us to get the contractor there and working in an area where he can keep his people busy and not going here, there and yawn. So that gets us through start of school of 18. So then, fall of 18, essentially all of that dark central core area is complete. The portables are still in place, music and art is still on a cart. The new art room, which is kind of in the immediately south of the gymnasium here, that may act as a multi-purpose room, it could be the food line, it could be where they have some pee and just, you know, that kind of becomes the multi-purpose space for a year. Not huge, but working with the staff, we think that, we can make that work. So then demolition, summer of 18 and going through, the plan then is to be complete by August of 19. The special ed room and, two special ed rooms in the east wing would probably be done during the summer of 19 as well. So, Mike, you wanna, anything you wanna add?
The only thing, the only thing that changes a lot is the mechanical system on the south, south end. When we had to reconfigure that, originally we had the VRF system, variable, variable flow refrigerant. Because of the phasing, we wound up going to more of a self-contained classroom unit. We've done this, it's an Airedale unit, we've done it at Holmes, Pete, Orchard Hill. And so we're doing that same type of system in this addition. And so that's really the only change, everything else is consistent with what we did prior.
So, any questions?
Questions? So this will keep the contractor there consistently?
The intent is that the contractor can stay there continuously.
And have we taken, have we taken this out for bid again? I mean, do we know what, or is that what we're doing here?
It will be going out June 20th and be bid on July 12th.
And we went through a lot of iterations, conversations, looking at how we can, because we knew the premium and the cost that was associated with last bid was really in some of the premiums were the length of the construction timeframe. So going from that 30-month, 33-month down to what's really gonna be about a 20-month build time.
Right.
With the changes that we've made, we feel very comfortable, at least.
We're feeling better.
Better.
And when will we move the portables then, what's, what's the plan for that?
The portables, we're expecting to get the quotes back next week. Contractor would then have two weeks to get the portables ready to move. Another, and during that same timeframe, once school is out, they could start on pouring the foundations for the portables at North Cedar. The following two weeks, the mover can get it up on wheels, get it ready to move, move it and then middle of July, I believe it is, get those set and then the contractor has, until school starts essentially, to get the stairs back on, the ramps back on, the electric utilities hooked back up and ready to rock and roll. We don't need them right away, but we want that all completed prior to the kids coming back for classes.
And those are the portables we had at Hanson?
They are currently at Orchard Hill.
At Orchard Hill, okay.
They need to be moved at Orchard anyway because that's where the new addition-
Right. They need to be moved at Orchard anyway because that's where the new addition will be going.
We, we have to get those out of the way right away.
Okay.
And, um, we've already issued the purchase order for the, uh, um, to the mover for the, for the portable, so that, that crew's already locked in. So, we, um, we're just waiting for the, uh, final bids on the concrete and, uh, utility hookup work, and then we'll be ready to rock with that.
Good. Okay. Jenny?
Just a process question. So, what we're doing tonight is approving the plan specs in form of contract and having the public hearing. Um, is this always the process? Because now we won't get bids back until July. Is this, you'll have to correct me and my, I'm a little foggy tonight because obviously I'm not feeling at a hundred percent. So, is, is that the typical timeframe, or do we typically have the bids before we would do this, or?
No, we, we need to do it this way. This is the way we would need to do it.
Okay.
We are-
Thank you for reminding me.
-setting this up a little bit. There's a couple of things that are going on this, this year. One is we're in the summer months, where our number of board meetings per month changes. And then the other thing is, uh, we wanna have both, um, bids ready to prepare to the board for the July board meeting. And this way, uh, we'll know for sure, you know, what the final costs are gonna be for all three projects, making sure that they all fit within the overall budget that we've established and being able to move forward.
So, it would be at that point, we would give full approval to move?
Correct.
I mean, okay.
And then, um-
And that would be for both projects.
For both projects.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And Pam, you're comfortable with all the North Cedar stuff?
Yeah. We've had different meetings now, several meetings, and actually Jen and Katie and I have met with the architects and Otis, and, um, it's gonna be tight, but we're gonna be able to do it.
Great.
And we actually have talked to the teachers, like the second grade teachers, about team teaching, and they're okay with that. And we talked to Brian Cross because we know not having a gym for a year will be a challenge, and they're very willing to work, they're excited. We always said, keep the end in mind, and that's what they're doing.
Great.
We have presented it to the entire staff, uh, last Wednesday, I believe it was, and, uh, we heard a lot of, uh, positive comments from them.
And, um, this isn't the first time that we've done a major remodeling. While the students were in, uh, school, we can look at both junior high schools as well at Hanson, and to a smaller degree, Southdale. And so, from a buildings and grounds perspective and from our, from that team's perspective, we sort of know the drill. Now, granted, the folks at North Cedar don't necessarily know the drill, um, I'm afraid they're gonna get a crash course and that, but we'll, we will help them out in any way we can, and, and like, uh, Mrs. Ziegler said, it's the end in mind, and, and, uh, we're gonna, all the projects are gonna certainly benefit students, and North Cedar will be no exception to that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
We're on F, correct? Yes.
Mm-hmm.
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the plans, specifications in form of contract, and set June twelfth, twenty seventeen at five-thirty as the date and time to hold a public hearing for the twenty seventeen North Cedar Elementary Project.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, moving on to item G on the agenda. Approval of the plan specifications, set a public hearing for the Robinson Dresser Baseball Project.
And I would like to introduce, uh, John, uh, Beederman. John is from, uh, Fear Graham, and John, uh, Fear Graham is sort of the, um, unofficial designated athletic field expert in northeast Iowa. And, uh, so, uh, the district has contracted with, uh, Fear Graham to, uh, to take a look at our baseball field. As you know, that we've, we've been trying to do some improvements, uh, around the edges on the baseball field, but we contracted with John's firm last year to do more, a more in-depth study, and we now have the results of that study, and we'd like to move forward with, uh, taking care of some of the issues out there, and I'll turn it over to John.
Okay. Thanks, Doug. Thanks, everyone. Uh, as Doug mentioned, I came down late this summer to look at the baseball field at Robinson Dresser. Uh, main, uh, reason was some drainage issues, you know, just kind of some wet spots that always seem to remain, uh, in the outfield, just on the outside of the infield. So, took a look at it, uh, did a little survey work, determined some elevations, looked at the original plans, and, uh, one interesting thing about the, that baseball field is the outfield actually drains towards the infield, uh, and then there's a real flat area just outside the infield where really the water has no place to go. So, it kind of just stands in there. Uh, I know there was some tiling that was done over the last several years, but not overly effective in really taking care of the problem. So, any of these baseball fields, natural turf fields, you need to have good drainage, otherwise you're gonna be unsuccessful. So, some good slope, uh, adequate slope, uh, away from the infield so we can get that water moving, so it doesn't have a place to stand. Um, and I think, you know, part of the reason why, uh, this was done this way, and, uh, a little more background, the baseball field was constructed in nineteen eighty-eight, I believe, plus or minus, so it's approaching thirty years old. Uh, the left field area, you know, the road sits fairly high, uh, they were trying to just match into that slope. So, it kind of makes sense why they did it that way, but yet it doesn't really help out the drainage, really hurts us for drainage. So, uh, what we're proposing and what we ended up with is a pretty major regrading of the entire field. Uh, home plate's gonna stay the same elevation, the infield will be roughly the same. It's a little irregular, uh, if you've walked out across it, there's some irregular spots, and it's just thirty-some years of playing. So, you know, it's time for some minor regrading there. But the big thing we'll be doing, instead of the outfield, particularly left field draining in towards the infield, we're gonna drain that away. Uh, so currently, as I mentioned, the, the highway or the roadway all sits up pretty high relative to the field. To be able to get that drainage away, we're actually cutting down, uh, the fence at left field, if you wanna think of it, about three feet. And then we'll be constructing a retaining wall, uh, roughly fifteen feet or so behind the fence, uh, to lower that whole grade so we can get the drainage off from the field. Uh, we're gonna put some intakes, we'll have some storm drainage that runs around the entire perimeter of the outfield and, uh, really get that water to go somewhere instead of just kind of sitting. So, that's really, uh, a major reason why we're, why we're getting this extensive, is just to improve that drainage. Along with that, we'll be putting in an extensive new subdrain system, so a tile system. Uh, that's gonna really help again with some surface water. It'll be designed such that it does pick up some surface water, it'll dry out that, uh, that soil below, so, you know, any of those drainage issues really should go away that we see now. Um, along with that, obviously, we're lowering that grade substantially at the outfield, so the fence will need to disappear, a new fence. Uh, if you ever walked around the field and looked at the fence up close, it's time for it to go. It's in pretty rough shape. Uh, tension wire at the bottoms off, there's gaps. Uh, I was there earlier this spring, part of it had fallen in, actually. So, uh, really, we're gonna make that a little stronger, uh, a little heavier duty fence. Uh, it'll have the windscreen back in it around the outfield like the current one has. Uh, current fencing, probably a little light duty to have that windscreen on it, so we'll beef that up a little bit. Uh, some other things we're doing with the fence, uh, the left field and right field foul lines, that's wide, it's sixty feet all the way out. Uh, most of the newer fields you see taper in, so it tapers in at the outfield corners. Uh, we're gonna bring that in, as you can see there on the image. Uh, the other thing we're doing with the bullpens right now, they're on the field of play, you know, in the foul territory, but right on the field of play. We're gonna move those outside of the fences, and then they'll be enclosed as well, so it should be a little bit safer for those using the bullpens. Bring them in just a little bit closer to the dugouts. Um, with the major regrading, the irrigation system will need to be redone because we're taking that material off. Uh, it's an older irrigation system, works fine, you know, from everything I hear, but it's, it'll just need to come out and a new one put in, uh, at the new grade. Um, new infield material, uh, we're looking at, you know, kind of the standard infield material that's used around here, it's an aggregate, comes from Minnesota. Uh, and then another interesting thing, the ball field originally had a warning track around the perimeter. Uh, if you go out there today, you don't see a warning track, it's disappeared. So, and that's a pretty important safety feature, you know, they're there for a reason, it's to warn players that are going after a ball in the outfield or foul ball, the fence coming up. So, uh, you don't really have that today, it's just vegetation all the way to the fence. So, we're gonna put that warning track back in. Uh, that'll be a granular material, actually comes from Wisconsin, it's a little coarser graded. Uh, it's what's recommended in a lot of fields for warning tracks. Uh, Target Field, for example, has the same material on their warning track. Uh, so we'll get that reestablished. Um, also, so the first portion of the project is the one that, uh, I will be preparing plans for and what we'll be looking at letting here in June. That includes everything I talked about here, and then along with it, kind of as a separate project, uh, we'll be getting new dugouts, and, uh, Dan will be working on that here, uh, letting, we're looking towards July timeframe there. The existing dugouts, again, they don't look bad from a distance, but you get up close, they're, they're, uh, in a little rough shape, especially the roofs and some of the supports. So, uh, making those a little bigger, uh, so the players should find those a little more user-friendly. Uh, and then lighting is the other thing that'll be upgraded, and, uh, Mike will be working on that again in the same timeframe for July, so, uh, separate letting for those two items, but it's all gonna be one overall project, if you wanna think of it, at the baseball field. Uh, the lighting, original, so thirty-some years old, wood posts, they don't look bad, but again, the bad part of wood posts is right at that ground level or below that we can't see. Uh, if you look up the lifespan of wood posts, thirty, thirty-five years, it's kind of the design lifespan, so we're right there. Uh, fixtures, again, far from new, they're, they're not modern technology, so, uh, get all that upgraded. So, really, everything will be new there. Uh, leaving the bleachers, you know, those are in good shape, there's some new concrete that was poured around, uh, the bleachers in the last few years. That's all good, so we'll leave that. Um, there's, uh, an area kind of between the baseball field and the softball field, it's got some crushed stones, some grass, some weeds, every, little bit of everything. That doesn't drain well either, kind of water just stands in there. So, we'll, we're not doing anything major there other than just some minor regrading to try to get that to go to our new drainage infrastructure around the outfield, so there'll be a little reshaping in that area, and, uh, it could be a future project to kind of dress that area up with some more surfacing. At least we'll get it so that it drains a little better than it does now. Uh, so with that, that's an overview. Any questions? Anybody has?
Questions?
When you talk about the drainage, where will it drain to?
Yep. Uh, so, I talked about left field being high, so we've kind of got some drainage issues there. Right field is the opposite. The field itself is up, but you go just beyond the fence, and there's about a fifteen-foot drop-off to the property line. So, that's the low part of all this. We're gonna place a storm sewer that will outlet beyond the right field fence in that low area, it's on your property, and that will wrap around the perimeter of the outfield, and then we'll pick up intakes all the way around, entire tile into it. So, it really works out well for having a good outlet.
It'll go into the ci- city storm sewer then?
It'll just surface drain onto the grass area.
Okay.
That's kind of just beyond-
It won't affect any of the homes around?
No, no. It stays on your property, ultimately it leaves as it goes to the south, but, uh, you know, we're really not generating anything new for runoff, we're really not hard surfacing anything, so, um, you know, shouldn't be any new large quantity at all. Yep.
Good thing.
And as, as John said, uh, this will, you'll be, um, receiving requests to approve bids in sort of two waves. Uh, the first wave will be the actual grading, which is the majority of the work that we'll do in June, and then the lights and the dugouts, uh, will come in July. Uh, but we needed to get the grading contractor locked in first, and so that's why we'll kind of do it in two waves.
And the estimated budget includes?
It's, uh, you saw it on, it was just under nine hundred and thirty thousand. Uh, we are, uh, have, uh, submitted a request to Black Hawk County Gaming, uh, for a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant to help offset this. Um, won't know if we're successful in that application for quite a while yet, uh, but, uh, it is a part of the, uh, ten-year master plan that would the board approve for the Pebble project. It's a little bit more than what we initially anticipated it would be, but, uh, it is a part of the master plan, and we'll shuffle some things around to make it work.
Suzie? What, what does a new field cost? Because this, I was a little sticker shocked at close to a million dollars to redo this, and I'm thinking, I mean, this is just off the top of your head. So, if we had the property that we could go, oh, let's just go build a new one. Are we looking at two million? Are we looking at?
Uh, I mean, we're, we're almost building a new one now. The grading, you know, if you just go do a new site, you're probably doing more grading. This is, you know, fairly uniform, we're just lowering that outfield. Now, it's a lot, I mean, we're taking a lot out, but it's less than a new site. Um, the water to get to the irrigation system, all that infrastructure is in, so we don't need to redo that. Uh, the bleachers are in, you know, bleachers, your bleachers, I don't know, a hundred thousand plus maybe, press box, probably more than that, so you'd be looking at all that again. So, it would definitely be more-
Sure.
Without a doubt. Yep.
We, we've done some high-level work with that too, and we have restrooms there, we have a safe room there, we have parking there to relocate those, those items, especially with some of those components-
Yeah.
Very cost ineffective, um, because we looked at different options with that just as a, a high-level analysis, and this is the most cost-effective-
Yeah.
...solution that we have.
Yeah, you've got good parking, you've got good access, you know, the, like you say, the bleachers, press box, that all looks good. So, you've got the basics, some of the basics are there and are, and have been upgraded over the years.
And of course, with the storm shelter that the district put in a few years ago, in the event that there's, uh, the weather gets a little sour during a ballgame, there's a place for people to go, and, and, um, it, it, as John said, it's been thirty years basically since the ball field was constructed, and it, it's time for facelift.
And there are two fields there, is that correct?
Softball and baseball.
Softball and baseball. Obviously, the softball field is much, in much better shape than-
Softball field looks good, yeah.
Okay, great.
And, and as a, as a reminder that we, uh, you and I use as a softball field for their program is where they share on the costs of, um, maintaining that field.
Okay.
And, uh, it's in, softball field's in really good shape.
How many, how many acres do we have out there?
About five.
Oh, is that it? I guess I thought it was bigger.
Roughly five acres.
Uh, no, that whole site is twenty.
Ooh, sorry.
The whole, the entire site, and there is a, um, the city of Cedar Falls also has this, what I would call like the equivalent of a little league ball field. Um, it would be to the south of the storm shelter that they use, uh, for their program during summer as well.
Good. Jenny?
So, and just kind of following up on Suzie, um, knowing that we will likely have a new campus at some point here, hopefully in the foreseeable future with a high school. It was considered the cost benefit, the timeframe in building a new field there versus keeping it at the current site. I'm assuming with the shape of the field, maybe the timing is a major part of the decision-making process for us.
It is, yeah, and we, that was discussed internally a lot to find out what is the best, uh, location if we do relocate. Timing is very important, cost is very important in that, and we're, we know that this location is, um, well-established within the community, it's, it's going to continue to have infill around that area, and, and we know that this is certainly a, a location that we're gonna use for years to come.
And collaboratively, is with the city and you and I as well?
Exactly. Yep, which is good.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the plans, specifications in form of contract, and set June twelfth, twenty seventeen at five-thirty PM as the date and time to hold a public hearing for the twenty seventeen Robinson Dresser Baseball Field Improvement Project.
Thank you, Doug. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or comments?
I just have a comment.
Yes.
I'd like to thank Harry Roberts, uh, who has done public comment twice to talk about the field, and he's done his research, and he actually took the time to, uh, take more than one board member out, uh, to show them the state that it was in.
Thank you, Doug, for bringing that up.
Thanks for hearing Harry.
Mm-hmm. Appreciate it. Uh, this vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item H on the agenda. Dr. Talbot, down there.
Thank you. Just by way of a little, uh, background, approximately this time last year, the board approved, uh, collective bargaining agreement with the Cedar Falls Education Association, and that was an agreement to cover a two-year period on language items and a one-year period on economic items. The economic items specifically addressed, uh, wages, supplemental pay, and, um, insurance. I believe Mr. Nevsky, it was on February the tenth, that we, uh, had our open meetings with CFEA and exchanged initial proposals. Both sides exchanged those proposals on the same date. Uh, within the next week, uh, major legislative changes occurred with chapter twenty, which covers collective bargaining, and became effective upon signature of the governor, and part of stipulations were that if a, an agreement for the successive year had not- And part of stipulations were that if an agreement for the successive year had not been reached, then we were to start the bargaining process once again, which we did. And that is now culminated in the recommendation that was in your board packet, which I will now read. Tentative agreement has been reached on a contract to cover a one-year period, July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018, on base wages. The second year of the 2016, 2016, excuse me, '18 agreement on language items will take effect on July 1st of 2017 and will expire on June 30th of 2018. This tentative agreement has been ratified by CFEA members. Specifically, the economic item that was bargained and agreed upon tentatively is that the BA Step 1, base wage on the basic salary schedule, increase by four-hundred-and-sixty dollars, and that there be step advancement for current employees. So the recommendation is that the base wage settlement of three-point-zero-three be accepted by the board.
All right. Any questions or comments?
Susie enjoys both sitting on this committee and just the time dedicated to going through the process. We greatly appreciate and certainly appreciate the work of Dr. Talbot and everybody sitting at the table to come to a resolution that's in the best interest of everybody. So thank you for that.
I think Susie and I would both agree is that it's a team effort, and CFEA has always been willing to talk, and it's friendly, a friendly environment. And I think when we walked away from the table, we walk away feeling good about the decision that was made. And we can thank Adrian and Doug and Pam and Dan for just being there and being supportive through that process. So thank you all. And do I have a motion to approve the CFEA base wage contract of three-point-zero-three?
So moved.
Thank you, Susan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to approval of board policy for, this is the first reading of two, and that was included in your agenda.
Yes, within the, the board packet, you'll see, I think it's a little over a hundred pages. This is our five-year cycle going through board policies this year, just knowing the scope and size of the 500 policies. That's the standalone series this year that we have up for review. We also have an additional three policies that, per Iowa code changes or recommendations from outside council, they are there for the board's review and potential adoption. It's a pretty extensive process. We have not had outside council review our 500 policies for a little over ten years. I think it's close to twelve years. These are always important policies. They're, they're sometimes difficult and challenging to go through, because the 500 series specifically deals with student, student behavior, student attendance, and student outcomes. So we, we thought it was extremely important this year to have the outside council review them. So when you see a lot of the red markings within the policies that we are reviewing, those are recommendations that have come from our outside council. And we always utilize Alders and Cooney out of Des Moines, specifically Christie Latta from Alders and Cooney. They are, they work with districts across the state and certainly write the majority of policies that are recommended to schools across the state of Iowa. The, the additional policies outside of the 500 series are 405.1. We needed to update our communicable disease plan and policies. So you'll see where that has been updated with some additional language and Iowa code clarification. We have also included a 704.5 update, which is an activity fund update. And there's been changes in Iowa code on, on how we handle activity fund dollars coming into the district, how those can be allocated, and just to clarify in line with Iowa code. And then we have a 710.4, which is meal charges, and that deals with a requirement that we now have to have in place a, a policy that delineates maximum debt limits and how do we handle situations where we have negative account balances that, that become excessive. So we've clarified that, and we'll communicate that to, to parents as well, pending board approval. Everything else within the 500 series policies, again, I'm not going to go through specifically each one, but there's very few changes that would be large impactful changes. Most of the changes are language clarification, additional language to ensure clarity. Some of them are additional Iowa code requirements to, to embed the right language in there. We had some policies that just had what would be dated language that just is not current with current practice, or maybe how it relates with the law enforcement language or other expectations across our, our community, our state, our country. So that was clarified and rectified as well. We had a policy committee meeting last week. Three board members served on that policy committee, so we went through these. As always, there's always a lot of questions and clarifications and dialogue, and certainly it would lean on policy committee members to be able to provide feedback, guidance, clarification.
Doug, Susan, and Jenny?
I have an issue with 503.4.
You have a concern with 503.4?
Yeah, I have a concern with 503.4, page 61.
Thank you, Doug. Okay.
I think we talked about this three years ago, but that could just be my memory. Sometimes I remember in the future and the past simultaneously. We are adding the phrase, "Students participating in these activities, we add serve as ambassadors of the school and role models to other students," and then the old language must adhere to high standards of content. I have two issues with that phrase. The first is, I believe it is false. For example, and I don't like to brag about how cool I was in high school, but I won several trophies as a member of the debate team freshman and sophomore year. And senior year, I was not only on the math team, but I was the captain of the math team. And yet, according to at least Facebook, I was not a role model for anybody. I just don't believe it's true that if you are in an activity, you are automatically a role model. So that's false, but more seriously, I really object to the implication of the converse, which is we're telling students that if you are not participating in activity, you are not a representative of the school, and you are not a role model. And the very students who we want to make feel part of the school, the very students who we don't want to see in our disciplinary hearings, we're telling them, well, you don't matter as much as the other kids. That red phrase was not in there previously, and I think the sentence works just fine. Students who participate must adhere to high standards of conduct. So I really don't see the reason to not treat all students as equal in that expression.
And that, just, let's pause there. And that statement then came from our council, right? Is that correct?
Correct, yes. That was recommended by our council. I'm assuming that is common language, because they write or have written the majority of the extracurricular code of conduct across the state at Alders and Cooney. And I think to Doug's point, you know, we pride ourselves on treating all students the, the same way, to make sure that we have high expectations regardless of any perceived differences amongst our students. And I think the, the reason why it specifically states it that way is that this is a code of conduct for extracurricular activities. So they're trying to highlight the fact that if you, and again, it's not a right to participate in extracurricular activities. It's something that is self-selected, and, and students choose to, to do that. So it's really saying that if you choose to be involved with these activities, that you are held to a standard, and that standard is, is outlined within the code.
And because this is the code of conduct for extracurricular activities, those are the students we're talking about in this policy.
But they're not necessarily role models. I mean, I don't care if a lawyer says it. If it's false, it's false. It's, I mean, I just don't believe that's a true statement. Is the captain of the math team a role model to other students? I'm telling you, no.
Well, I think-
I, I walked around with Lord of the Rings for a whole semester, and another kid picked it up.
Would you be comfortable if we just said they serve as ambassadors of the school and must adhere to high standards of conduct? It's the role models that you're comfortable with, right?
I'd be more comfortable if we said that they must adhere to high standards of conduct.
But they do serve as ambassadors for the school, because they are an extracurricular-
Doesn't every student?
Well, not, no, because they're not in extracurricular activities.
They, they do, but in this policy, we're only talking about that.
Policy. This is not all students. This is students who are taking, who are involved with extracurricular.
How does that make them ambassadors of the school?
Because they're representing our school when they're elsewhere participating.
Are all students who participate in extracurricular activities going and traveling?
Many of them do.
They are going to be in some form or function performing within a school-sponsored event that is going to be an extra for the school.
Right. Many of those are.
There's not one event or extracurricular activity where they wouldn't have some sort of-
It just sounds like the role model is the one that you're having trouble with most.
That's the one that I'm having trouble with most. And I'm uncover, I understand that this is just dealing with students in there, but I still think there is an implication of the converse of the statement. That we're telling students who don't participate in activities, well, yeah, these are the ambassadors of the school. You can go eat paste.
They're the only ambassadors. It says that when they are doing that, they are looked upon as representatives of our school. Because we are, when they go over, for example, when we go over and play West and basketball, we are, those students are representing Cedar Falls schools.
Yeah, I buy that.
Yeah, yeah.
Or when student leadership, well, student leadership on extracurricular activity?
It would be considered an extracurricular.
Okay, let's pick one that's not. But when, so when they go to another building, I mean, we would hope that any, that any of us as students would be ambassadors. We just, at this time, don't fall under this extracurricular activity.
A high school reading buddy that goes down to the elementary might not be necessarily an extracurricular activity. That's more of a volunteerism that a lot of our students do, but that's not a code of conduct or extracurricular activity. That's sanctioned by the school.
Right.
My, my, you know, thought with that would be if we strike and role models to other students and have it say, "Activities, serve as ambassadors and must adhere to the high standards of conduct," you know, I, I think we can approve it with that language. I just want to double-check to make sure there wasn't anything that causes us some angst with Iowa code, because again, our attorney recommended that specific language. I would want to clarify with Christie if there's anything that puts us in violation.
Are you okay with that, Doug?
All right.
If we look at that?
Yep.
Okay, and so there was something else in this, too?
Yeah, the other thing is, I understand we don't want our students breaking any laws, and I would absolutely, even if they're on the math team, if they're breaking a law, they should be off.
And you're talking about where?
Well, I'm talking about now, item, item one. And then the issue I had was if they do something that is legal off-campus, specifically if students are traveling, and they travel to a, a country or an area, or perhaps their home country where alcohol is legal for eighteen-year-olds. According to this, if somebody goes to Mexico and posts a picture of themselves or somehow is caught drinking when it is legal, that they can be suspended from the football team.
Or if they're eighteen and they could legally use-
Yeah.
-some kind of product, and they're doing it off-campus, we would, we would hold them accountable here.
And now, the argument you gave a few years ago, which I actually buy into, I understand it, is that this gives them an out, so everybody is smoking, and the kid goes, well, I'm not going to smoke, because I can be kicked off the football team.
In that actually, you know, I was, you talked about your high school experience. I was a complete, and maybe I still am, square in high school. But that was, again, the, the response that I would give quite often. I have high expectations, and, and the conduct code certainly weighed and played a part of that. Now, does that ring true with all kids? Not necessarily, but it gives some students an opportunity to be able to, they, they know the expectations. They, they typically will abide by those expectations. I think if you don't have a high standard of conduct within these extracurricular activities, and sometimes that can start to create a different culture within your school system that says, there are some things that we accept, there's other things that we, we don't accept. I think if you have that high bar of expectations, kids typically will rise to that and meet that.
Yeah, I guess, so my issue is not really the tobacco as much, although I understand, Jenny, what you're saying. I, I do have a problem when people are traveling. Then they're doing something that is perfectly legal, and many people would not even see as ethically wrong. Someday, I would hope to afford to take my kid to Italy. Now I can't. But it would be wonderful if I took her to Italy, and then we had wine with dinner, and she's in high school. I don't want her to lose her place here.
There are, you, that's an interesting, you know, point, and, and it's one of those aspects where, as we try to ensure that students' families make decisions that are best for their families, but also as we look at that big picture of, of ensuring that we have a proper code of conduct, that students are adhering to what the rules and regulations are here in Cedar Falls, Iowa, regardless of where they're at. It's very typical to have that expectation of very high standards of conduct. So unless you're twenty-one, you don't drink. If you're out for activities and being a representative of the Cedar Falls Community School District, and you decide to have a cigarette even though you're eighteen, a block away from, from the school system, that's not something that we see as good representation of what you should represent as an extracurricular participant. And, and this is pretty typical. You know, there's a lot of different opinions and debates and dialogue around what should be in a code of conduct, similar to what, to what should be included in an expulsion or a suspension. You try to keep this, you know, specific in a lot of different areas, but also cognizant, that we want to make sure that there are options, and, and within this policy, that individuals can appeal it if it's something that they feel is unique and a unique circumstance, and, and then that will be reviewed. But we want to make sure that we, we have high expectations for kids.
I guess I would have two comments following up on Doug. One of mine is, by the time our policy committee sits down and addresses these, the policy has been crafted. We really do not have a role in creating the policy. And for some of our policy, I think, I think that's fine, because there are, if it's a human resources policy, you know, that should definitely fall under Adrian. If it's a business policy, that would fall to Doug. For our, for our student conduct policies, I feel it's important we have board representation when we're talking about these things, so that we have an opportunity before it's already created to have input and give feedback. So I, I'm just putting that out there for consideration of the board. I know there is a committee that, and I hope that they, from time to time, are reviewing these just like we are. So I hope that that would be something we could think of, or at least consider, is adding a board representation to that.
And I, we, after the conversation that we had at the policy committee, I, we believe that there was a, we believe, a board representative at the last time. The conduct code and the extracurricular activities group looked at that. That was a pretty extensive review. We always typically, and it's true across the state, we'll have students, staff, parents, and I think we had a board representative at that. I'm not sure who was on at that time. That's been a couple of years ago, but certainly, we always want that. And that'll be something that we would include in the future as that committee goes through this process. Conduct code revisions are always a huge challenge and hurdle, because you want as much input as possible to make sure that the changing dynamics and sometimes what is perceived as ethics or morals are true within that conduct code as you look to the future. The challenge is, you don't want that to change every year either-
Right.
-by the whim or the thoughts of, of the board, because that can change annually, every two years with board elections, which is extremely confusing then for how do we enforce it and consistency for kids. So, but I appreciate that, and I think that's something that we'd certainly want to have as well, is, is not only board representation, but parent representation, student representation, as well as just general community representation, because that's important.
The other question I would have is, do we reach out to our graduates who've gone through under these policies? I mean, it's, it's great to have a policy, but if it's really not being followed to a vast majority of extent, then it's just a policy. It's just words on paper. So I'm curious, do we ever reach out to our graduates to ask, you know, did you adhere anonymously? you know, did you adhere anonymously? Did you adhere to the policy? Did it impact? Did it give you an excuse and, and give you an out to not do something you might have done otherwise? Or did you just, I mean, are our kids vastly ignoring the policy? Are they unaware of the policy and they, it doesn't matter? I mean, I'm just curious if we've ever, that would be, to me, very valuable feedback to determine the value and benefit of our policies in relation to our students.
Yeah, we can look into that, see how that can be undertaken in, in trying to get the feedback from individual students. A lot of times with graduates, you don't get a great turnout or turn back with surveys, but we can certainly have that be one of our, our questions to find out, was it a deterrent? Because that's the hope, that it's a deterrent. So students say, I'm not going to choose unhealthy habits and, and make sure that I can say no. I think the other component with that is to try to track if, you know, who is returning those surveys because we want to just target those students that maybe or were involved with extracurricular, which is a very high percentage of our student body, but make sure that we kind of target that response rate to those students.
Well, I wonder if we could do an exit survey of our, I mean, like an exit interview with someone leaving a job, you know, when we have seniors here before they leave our doors, it'd be a great opportunity. You know, they don't really have much to lose at that point if it's anonymous. I hope, I'd hope they'd be, they'd be honest. And, you know, the state does those surveys, which I think we're always kind of shocked to when the state surveys come in at how young children are when they're trying some of these things and they're either drinking or smoking. And, you know, we seem to get at least kind of a realistic view in that state anonymous survey that's done, so.
Yep, yeah. And we do some exit interviews and exit surveys with students. This is something we can look to try to add to that and try to get some different feedback, you know, and then it's trying to make sure that, do we want to base policies on, on perceptions of students exiting at 18 or 19, or do we want to do policies that we know are hopefully in place for the enhancement of experiences and making sure that people make great decisions and good choices? And, and I think that's just that dialogue that you have to have as an ongoing measure. There's a stop sign by my house. I'd love if it wasn't there and I'd be able to kind of roll through it every day, but I know I can't. So it's, it's part of that expectation that if they gave me a survey, I might say, take out the stop sign because I, I don't want it there. There would be.
But the survey question would be, are you stopping? In which case your answer would be yes.
Well, I think it's going to be a much more in-depth question than that because it has to be targeted and more of a deterrent type, you know, did you consider this, you know, if they did undertake that, did you consider the policy prior to actually inviting within what was illegal? And I think you have to really drill down deeper to get the right answer. So I'm just saying that I think if a simplistic survey could come out with really inaccurate data, as it always is the case, we just need to make sure we target it the right way. I think we can do that.
When you reach out to the law firm to talk about the role model question, would it be something that you could ask them what other districts do when it comes to out-of-country travel?
Oh, we can ask, yeah.
And that, that might, that might help clarify it.
Yep.
And is, if, if they have, do they have anything separate regarding out-of-country travel?
I've never seen that.
Okay.
But I'll ask. If anybody would know in our state, it would be.
The one, yeah, okay. I would think that most kids would have no idea we had policies unless they broke them and they were brought up, right? I, I, I would think that most don't. Now, maybe on our extracurriculars, Dan.
Yes.
Are, because of our teams, those things may be brought up differently. I don't know. Do we have, are those, are those things spelled out like in our concussion stuff? And, you know what I mean? When I downloaded all the athletic forms, there may be some policy notes in there.
Well, all of our kids receive this along with their parents at the beginning of every, every season. And it's an expectation of the coach to review these along with additional team rules that they may set.
Right.
As well. So, you know, I, I guess I agree a little with Andy in that I don't, just because we have maybe a certain percentage of our kids that would say, well, I didn't follow the policy and I, you know, I drank while I was in high school or I did what, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't set those rules or set those high expectations for kids. I, you know, we, we may not survey our kids formally, but I've had two of my own kids that have gone through, who are very involved in activities. And I do know that a big fear of theirs was to violate the policy and lose some time playing. And I, I believe it deterred their behavior because they did not want to lose time playing in, in, in the games. Now, I'd be the last one to say, my kids never drank in high school and didn't do anything wrong in high school, but I, I think the policy itself does, does make kids think that if I choose to do this, there are some consequences that I'm going to accept if I, if I do. And so, you know, I, you know, with the policy in place, and we do have kids that violate it every year, and I agree with that. At the same time, we don't have a whole lot of arguments as to whether or not I violated the policy and now I'm going to have to serve a sanction. We may have kids deny they violated the policy, but once they recognize or they, they admit to violating the policy, they accept what the, the consequences are because they know what the consequences are.
Maybe if we can clarify the out-of-country travel, because that's what I think I'm hearing from Doug, that, that may at least.
Yep.
Help that.
That's, that's my main issue with it. I don't want to speak for other people.
Okay.
And should we ever go to reviews? I mean, I, I understand we need to have expectations and we need to have consequences. I get all that. You know, ours is just a very punitive and I think there are some maybe teachable opportunities here should someone break the policy, that I wish it was more of a learning moment, an opportunity for them rather than just, it's very punitive rather than, and it still needs to maybe be that, but it'd be great if there was a learning component that went with it to give them an opportunity to.
Oh, I think they're probably, this is not the first time that they, you know what I mean? I don't think that, you know, they, that happens once and they go, oh, I had no idea. I mean, I, I really believe that kids are.
And I'm even talking, you know, about a bigger picture.
Right.
Kind of learning moment. I still think they're teenagers and I think they all sign it. And I think those of us who probably are sitting up here hammer home to them what the policy means because we talk about it and we sit in policy review committee meetings. I don't know that most parents.
Right.
Spend a lot of time when the kids bring them home. So I've shared my concerns.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Duly noted.
And the fact that I had an objection to one page out of 107 is amazing. I rarely read a hundred pages.
Yes, Doug, that's.
Very, this was really good work and I thank everybody who put a double to it.
But thank, thank you, thank everyone for your comments. And it's, it's not easy to go through this particular one.
No, and the policy committee does a great job. They always ask tremendous questions. They always provide great insight and we appreciate that.
What would be great is to bring the binder of all the policies and just as a visual. We have TV now. It would be great to just show.
Yes.
How many policies we have and, and people are more than welcome to read through every single one of them if they.
Yes.
And they are on the website.
They're on the website.
They're on the website, yes.
So it's very extensive.
Saturday night, Saturday night fun. Thank you.
And there are many, many more people involved with this, too. There are so many committees throughout the district that review these policies before we see them. I know that all the cabinet has their areas of expertise. They review them in addition to down in Des Moines. There's a lot of work that goes into these policies.
Look at our health and wellness committees. We look at our bullying harassment committees. We, there's just so, there's a very extensive network.
Right.
Correct.
Anything else you would like to talk about before we?
There's one other.
Call a motion?
One other component in this that I know we, we talked about during the policy committee, and it's within seven oh, seven 10, excuse me, 405.1, communicable diseases. And that's the, the first policy within the PDF.
Do you have a page number?
It would be page.
One.
Oh, okay.
One, and it actually goes into page two. We are recommending that we remove 405.1R. That's the regulations behind the policy. And that is, and Pam could talk much more about this in depth, but that is actually embedded within our, our practice and the handout that we give to parents every single year to talk about our preventative maintenance. And, and that can change from time to time. It's just our immediate response within that without, you know, hygiene and different components. It gets into very, some specific topics, you know, and coughing and respiratory hygiene and, and all those different things.
Need to read that one.
Yes, it's very, but the recommendation, the, the, actually our, our health providers was that that be just taken out of policy.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the policy's first reading?
I move to approve the first reading of the 500 series board policies as well as board policies 405.1, 704.5, and 710.4.
Thank you, Susan. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. And now the book.
We have been going through a, a book study as kind of a, a board leadership team. And that certainly is called fierce conversations. And, and I think it's always the caveat to talk about fierce conversations is certainly not necessarily what sometimes the connotation is when you think of fierce. They're, they're not, you know, mean spirited. They're not confrontational conversations. But, you know, just on the cover of the book, again, it talks about what fierce means. It's robust and, and powerful, passionate, unbridled conversations to make sure you really get the, of the, the topic. The almost entirety of the administrative team went through this training as well recently. And I think hopefully you have enjoyed reading the book so far. And I think right now we are in chapters number five and six, which are actually principle number five and six. So I know I'd sent out a, a few conversations stem starters. I always enjoy doing these as I try to think and process the different components of the book. And chapter number five is entitled, Obey Your Instincts. Chapter number six is entitled, Take Responsibility For Your Emotional Wake. Both of them cause me some time to pause and reflect and think as well. So one of the questions that, that I kind of wrote down was, and she took a lot of time to try to describe on pages 170 and 171, when you're having conversations, you have to have kind of a left-hand column, a right-hand column, and kind of a middle column within your brain, that as you're having a conversation, you need to not, not only have the conversation and engage the individual you're talking with, but then also have that left-hand side of your brain working with your assumptions, working with your judgments, working with your ah-hahs that might pop up in the middle of that conversation that are kind of interfering with your ability to have that conversation. So, you know, I put down a question that said, how, how do you handle that as you go through conversations to make sure that you keep your left-hand column in the left-hand side, but also make sure that you are looking for all the signs and symptoms, not just listening for content within conversations? Have you found a strategy? Are there ways that you've been able to handle that? Or have you seen situations where people's left hand gets involved and maybe interferes with what's happening within the conversation?
I think sometimes it depends on who you're having the conversation with. So probably for me, my private thoughts when I have a conversation with my husband may get away, get in verbalized versus when I might be visiting with a coworker. Sure.
It's how emotionally involved you are to it. Close to it, yeah.
Yes.
This is sort of similar to years ago when it was called active listening.
Yeah.
It's a different, little bit different form of that. That's what I saw when, your question was, what does that mean to you? I thought, this is active listening, but that's dating me.
The term is still used.
Is it? Okay.
Yes. Well, this chapter talked a lot about triggers as well because of that emotional engagement. And, and we had to do an exercise as we went through training, what is your trigger? What caused you to maybe take a step back, maybe be disengaged in a conversation or cause you maybe to go directly to your left-hand side and be more, more emotional in that conversation than maybe what you should be? It was interesting to be able to listen to people's triggers and what might cause them to trigger. And I think the example that the presenter used when we were going through the training was, mine is this person, it was a gentleman, where if somebody uses curse words or swear words, that certainly escalates me and is a trigger for me. So have you thought about what could be triggers for you during conversations that causes you to go to the left-hand side?
Was that the second, was that the next chapter?
Well, no, there was a section in this one, I think, that talked about triggers and what, what triggers you as an individual.
One of mine is when someone gets, starts getting completely off top, topic, you know, and I just, all I can think is, get back on it.
Answer my question.
Yes, exactly.
What are you hiding?
Jenny, I can tell you want to say something.
Oh, I don't know. I mean, I'm not sure if I have a trigger. I, I absolutely, obviously have triggers. I mean.
Oh, Jenny.
I love, I wish we could get everyone's face on this so they could see when they roll their eyes when I say things like that. But, you know, I mean, I probably, I probably trigger it more for other people. And my, you know, my balance here is how do you act on your instincts rather than passing them over for fear that you can, might, might offend someone? Because, you know, some of the things, obviously, you know, I feel very passionate about. I think that's why a lot of us are up here. And it's hard to do that and be true to your passion and beliefs without leaving an emotional wake, which goes into the next chapter, but.
It's a big balance and very difficult balance to be able to come up with that. And I, oh, I, I have the quote marked because I love the, the quote, but I didn't put it down within the questions. But it basically says, the ability to obey your instincts, to come out with your left-hand questions and points is much better than being so guarded that you have no point in the conversation, that you, you want to be able to have that balance to get your passion and your point across without coming across so strong, but also balancing that without coming across with no content, no passion, no emotion. And that's the balance. And I think she does a great job trying to explain that, to make sure that the conversations, again, are the relationship. And it's really about how do you enhance those relationships, but also be cognizant of your emotional wake.
And I will say, the book started with my favorite quote from my favorite book, so we should do The Little Prince for our next book study because it's my favorite quote ever. Have you read The Little Prince to your kids? It's so good.
Is this where we insert Irol?
You.
Oh!
No, I.
The Little Prince, great. Look it up.
And yes, I.
With the fox.
I have.
Are you talking about the shipbuilding quote?
What?
The very first quote on this.
It's the very first quote.
Very first quote.
It is only with the heart that one can see rightly. What is essential is invisible to the eye. Such a great quote.
And she does, she pulls from so many different.
She quotes them again. And I actually highlighted this. I'm going to be using this when I do workshops. If you want to build a ship, don't gather your people and ask them to provide wood, prepare tools, assign tasks, call them together and raise in their minds the longing for the endless sea. And that took me far, far too long to discover about being a leader.
Really good. There, there are so many different components within these chapters that I just, it's really refreshing when you start looking at, how does this not only apply within our professional lives, how does it apply within our personal lives? What do we do to try to counterbalance both, both realms? And, and, you know, I, I think maybe how I react with my left-hand side when I'm having conversations at home, sometimes don't always align necessarily with how I have conversations maybe professionally. And, and that's maybe disconcerting, too.
And in the, in the section, though, she was actually saying not to be afraid of letting the left hand side out, side out.
Agreed. That has to come through. It has to just come through with a filter.
But there are different situations, too. We will leave each other tonight at the end of this meeting.
Yes.
There are other situations you don't.
Sure.
Well, actually Doug is an example because this has always impressed me. When we are speaking at a public meeting, you never say a sentence that if it were quoted out of context would be false. And that certainly sometimes people try to get you to simplify something. Or so, in general, is this going to happen or not? And then you will not answer that. You will say a sentence that if I just took that sentence, it would be true. And in the context of your position, that's absolutely right. I don't want you reacting with emotion and saying, oh, yeah, we got to double the budget for that or we're all screwed. You shouldn't say that. Whereas I have the, I have that liberty to say that because I'm not speaking with the same authority. So it really does depend on the context and who's talking.
That's true.
So speaking of that, emotional wake, I would just like to hear from board members. As you read that chapter, what were your takeaways? What were your insights? Any ah-hahs or thoughts as you read through principle number six? And principle number, number seven is let the silence do the heavy lifting. So this is where I just remain silent for a while.
Ask your question again.
Any ah-hahs? Anything that you thought was intriguing, maybe interesting? Anything that you thought was intriguing, maybe interesting as she went through and, and talked about taking responsibility for the emotional wake?
Well, I know that's something we've talked, we've talked about before. We all are very aware of it, but to review the four components of a stump speech are so important. I mean, if you can just, if we could just have that at the forefront almost all the time, we'd be farther ahead. I mean, you could stop reading the chapter after the page, second page because of that. I mean, we all know this. We just don't necessarily do all those components.
I think on page 200 and 201, I dog-eared the page where they just, you know, do all the statements, you know, for unloading and blaming and name-calling and, you know, you can go through there. And I hope I don't do this often, but there are, you know, some things I probably have said. But I think as you mature in life, that you get better at not allowing this to happen. At least I would hope.
At least I hope so.
Yes, we all hope, yeah.
I'm not there yet. No, this was, this, it's funny you brought that up. This was physically hard for me to read those two pages.
Why is that?
I do those, all of them. Every single one. Not every, not everyone every day. Not that bad. But if I was to say like, say the last eight weeks, I probably could have checked all of these off. And it, it hurt to read that. It, it was emotional for me to read all of those.
Say that in your head or out loud?
Oh, out loud.
Okay.
Well, and, and I think, you know, I wrote that down as just one of the questions because this is those loaded messages that sometimes we, we all hear, sometimes we all use when we start a conversation or embedded in a conversation, especially one when it becomes emotional. You know, I, I think not only professionally or personally, you can just go down those loaded points. Those typically are conversation enders and typically sometimes relationship enders in some cases when, when you have those loaded messages or frameworks as, as you have conversations. It's powerful. It was very difficult as you read through those, and you can think back on situations or scenarios and all of us can about how these have come up or how those loaded messages occurred.
And when you're teaching, if, fortunately, I don't do this stuff when I'm teaching. I'm more conscious then, but it doesn't just shut down a conversation, it might shut down an entire class. And as a student, I've seen that done. A teacher will do a few of these early in the semester, and then the class is pretty much done as far as communication between students and teachers.
Well, and there's, you know, I know she mentioned this, I believe it was in this chapter, where you never know the words that you use that cause encouragement for somebody to have great success in life. And it could be something in an interaction that you never knew about. But on the flip side, your emotional wake and some of these loaded messages could cause the exact opposite for somebody to shut down and decide to go a different pathway. And, you know, the one that really resonated with me was some of the sarcastic statements that she put in there. And, and you, you, you hope that people understand sometimes the, the humor involved with, you know, trying to resonate and build relationships, but it can also have a very detrimental impact.
And there are different people that you can use that with than others.
Exactly.
Depending on how they take it.
Exactly.
I think anytime you leave, you leave a conversation with someone, and you guys probably never do this, but you're kicking yourself because you think, I know we all do, but you're kicking yourself, you think, "Oh, wished that hadn't," or "I hadn't," or whatever. And you can attribute it to always probably one of these. Or if you walk away and something was really hurtful, it's probably attributed to one of those. This kind of covers it.
Hopefully, you've learned that, you know, some of us are just genetically not able to control our facial expressions, so you give us a little grace there. But, you know, I mean, I, because I know when it says the instant, "I'm triggered," my reaction triggers everyone else in the conversation. So, I mean, I hope, I kept looking at it as a board member, and, you know, I hope it's an opportunity for our administrators and our staff to see that, you know, you guys at least are all coming from kind of the same world and the same, I mean, we all have the same goals, but you guys are all very much in the same.
Different realm.
So, our realm is a little different, and we're, we're representing different perspectives. So, it's just a different dynamic when we're giving input or having conversations. So, I hope it's an opportunity for all of us to remember that's where it comes from and still be true to ourselves, but maybe hopefully that emotional wake isn't quite as violent if we have an understanding of who, who we are and what we're trying to do.
So, we're supposed to say, "Oh, that's just Jenny."
I, I know that. I mean, when they're saying that, Jenny thinks she's hot stuff. I'm sure that's all the time.
One of my takeaways from this, which was, you know, was the, the second question that I just put as a STEM starter is really about the appreciation. And I think this rings true right now, especially with just some of the political dynamics that we have going on and some of the angst. And it just says, the quote is from the book, page 194, "In the business world, confrontation, criticism, and even anger are more socially acceptable than expressions of appreciation." And it really caused me some, some pause to really internally reflect, "How have I shown appreciation recently? What have I done outwardly?" She gave some, some examples of, of how you do that. And I know personally, especially sometimes with those conversations, I'm more task-oriented sometimes. I'm a D when it comes to this profile, and I like to get things done, and when they're done, I like to move on to the next task and not worry about, and sometimes not maybe appreciating all the work that went into accomplishing that last task. And that caused me pause to say, "I need to do a much better job of that to, to show appreciation."
See, I think that's one of your strengths, is how much appreciation you express. I think that's one of your very positive, strong strengths. And I've always, I've always felt that about. So, I know you probably see other areas, but I think you are very good at showing appreciation.
Well, I appreciate that. I wouldn't have said that, you know.
But you're not coming across that way, anyway, at least to me, yeah.
I even think us as a board and an admin team, it, how great was it when Sid came and shared his appreciation for going on TV and, and gave specific examples how that has benefited people? And unfortunately, people in our roles, people in city council, you know, the vast majority of the time we probably hear from people is when it's more of a negative problem, a concern, rather than just a, a good story. So, it does make a difference. And I think you're right, as a, as a board, I don't, I think we're not able to maybe communicate that to you all as much as we should as well.
Good comment, Jen.
Thank you. Any other thoughts about these two chapters? We'll continue reading, and, and we have a few more left to go, but it's, it's hopefully been a beneficial book for you.
Have you finished it as an admin team?
We, we finished the training for this, and, and everybody's read the book, and so, yes. Yep. And I love chapter number seven.
Okay, good.
This was a good choice.
Yeah.
It is. It's a really good choice. It's, I think it just helps us not only professionally but personally and hopefully within all of our relationships and conversations.
Yeah. No, gives us good food for thought. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Well, the one that is left off of here is what we talked about earlier. June 12th is our next regularly scheduled board meeting, and, and that will start at 5:30. So, that's our pilot program to, to try that out. Again, retirement reception, we have a great number of just outstanding retirees. We're going to recognize them at May 31st, 4:15 at Pheasant Ridge. And, and again, we just know, always know that's a great evening, a great opportunity. Commencement's May 28th. Administrative Board Retreat, June 7th at 9:30. And then we are looking at a special board meeting, as we heard tonight, that on June 22nd, potentially at 4:30. I'll, I'll send out a doodle. But the, the discussion is, that's going to be just looking at the grading package for that, that project at Robinson Dresser because the lights and, and the other component of dugouts won't be ready at that time. Question is, that's probably going to be a fairly short condensed board meeting. That is also when we start the weekend for.
Sturgis Falls.
Parking here might be challenging. They're going to start probably blocking off some meetings of parking. They're going to set up some of the activities, so is it appropriate? Because that's a grading package. That's going to be a pretty finite to have that at the admin center just because of all the other potential conflicts around this area at that time.
Would it be possible to still videotape it at our building?
Oh, yeah, we can still videotape it. It just won't be that high-def, but we can maybe, we can still livestream that and then put that on our YouTube channel.
Okay. Would that be all right?
Yeah, that's absolutely fair.
Okay.
That would be the meeting that would have been this 26th. We're having on the 22nd at 4:30.
We won't have a 26th meeting. That's kind of as necessary, and the plan is not to have that.
So, you've got everyone here, do you, besides Jeff and Jim, do you need a doodle or if we know our schedule? Are you okay with?
All right, so we're talking June 22.
Yep, Thursday, 4:30.
And it, replacing?
46. The regular might be one on 26.
We won't have one on the 26th.
Yeah, that's perfect. Absolutely.
Okay, so you've.
Silence do the heavy lifting.
Okay, so everybody's all right with that except?
We're awesome with it.
We just need to communicate that with Jeff and, and Jim.
Perfect.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Okay.
Of course, we have our Gold Star.
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
6:30. Starts at 7:00.
And those seats are, I'm sure they're still available seating.
They usually have an area for us to go up and sit.
Right. But if members of the community would want to go.
That I don't know.
Tickets offline or online, but they are free. They just like to track numbers and seating capacity.
My daughter's singing in that.
Oh, good. So, we'll see.
Sorry, I couldn't stop myself saying that.
It's a great night to recognize her.